Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting, Thursday, December 8th, 2022. And we're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin with number one, two, which is adjustments to the agenda.
I've got two. One, we will not need number 10 executive session this evening. There's no longer a need to meet. So we'll strike that. And yes, for the school committee and the audience that's here tonight, you'll notice that there's a lovely holiday table in the back with some great goodies and the holiday spirit, and that is a 100% thank you to Kim, Andy, Mike, Sharon, Paula, and Patty that had nothing to do with me. I just, we had an ad team meeting, and I said, would you guys mind pulling something together? And voila.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing to do with it, and it's wonderful. Thank you so much, everybody. And I want to remark, anybody that's here at any time, if you don't have a speaking part and you want to get up and get something to eat or drink, please help yourself because there's too much there for any one of us to take home with us. So please, please help yourself.
Mary disagrees.
That's good.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public? All set with our public tonight? Okay. Celebration of learning, then, we'll talk about report cards.
That one's mine, and this is in two parts because you're going to get a breakdown of our report card from Patty under progress monitoring. But last meeting, there was a moment where I kind of went off on a little tangent with you guys expressing to you how hard the teachers have worked on getting this report. I don't know if you remember that, but I was like, at the time, I was hedging on, we're going to get a report card out, and these teachers are nailing it. They're working as hard as they can to get it done under a lot of pressure. And I mentioned that there was from tears to laughter in the process. It's been hard for the teachers. And tonight, I can do a little celebration dance because they did it! Our teachers did it, and that report card went out! And I love it, and they got it done, and it's great because even at like the middle school meeting we had, they're like, yeah, kids are really concerned about their report card now because it goes home and gets signed. It was really cool. And Mike and Patty were so supportive of the teachers, but if we, if they didn't pull on the rope as hard as they did to get it done and said, this is the submission, we can't fail, we wouldn't have gotten away with that. So tonight, I am just going to say, I am celebrating the fact that they worked so hard and we got a report card out. In a few minutes, you're going to see what the report card's all about, okay? So I wasn't sure what I was going to say tonight. It might have been, I sent a letter to the community saying, we're going to get T2 report card, I'm still working on it. That was plan B. Didn't have to do it, little jig. Love it. We're good. And yeah, that is it for celebrational learning. Just a minute of praise.
Quite a celebration.
Yeah, I couldn't be happier, guy.
Okay, then, we will move on to number four, which is consent agenda, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette. Any discussion?
Just instead of update on executive session for 4.1, I would just put in no action taken.
No action taken, got it.
Anything else? All those in favor? Okay, on to number five. Do any of you have, we'll listen to the superintendent's report, and then if you have questions about any of the other administrative reports, we'll go on to those.
So I submitted my report in the packet. If you have any questions about that, I just want to pick up on a couple things that may not be in there and are more of an advertisement for the community, that the holiday concert pre-K through three is a week from tonight. That is at 6 o'clock in the gym. It's always, always a favorite event here in the community for pre-K through three kids to get up and do some singing and really welcome the holidays. So we look forward to that a week from tonight. And just one other thing is basketball season's in full, full go now. We've done an away game, and we've had a home game, and I think we have a several-week schedule in front of us. So if you want to get out for a night of fun, come on down and cheer on the Acton Wildcats. Take a look at that basketball schedule. And that's about it.
I don't know, didn't see it.
You go ahead.
What about the LED replacement? What's going on?
That's going to be part of tonight's agenda. Yeah, Andy's going to give us a quick update.
So anybody have any questions about any of the other administrative reports?
I got a question from Mike. Sell any computers?
All of them, huh?
Seriously?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. That's good.
She's trying to automate her go-taker seat. She's doing the walk shame.
Thank you for your part in our partying tonight, whatever your part was in the partying, if you were a part of the partying.
I was, thank you. Mine was small, actually. I just put it together, told somebody else to do it.
I already took that.
Any other questions from any of the reports? Okay. Then we will move on to number six, which is progress monitoring and report card data with Patty.
I'm going to be Patty's assistant. I don't want to get in the way of the camera. So I'm going to give you some handouts as we go so you don't get ahead of the slideshow because what she shows you is going to be kind of hard to see. So I'll give any extra handouts to the audience once I'm done.
Do you have that proof too?
Yes.
Once I see it, I'll know which one it is. Okay, report cards pre-K, okay. Patty's going to start with this one.
So we would, we thought we could just show you what each of the individual report cards look like by, by section. So this is pre-K, and theirs is very different than, than the others, but it gives the parents a feel for what they've got coming. So their attendance is there, and their performance, academic performance, and then their core things that they scored for T1. And then they, they had a written piece too, but it was, it was separate. So it was really exciting, actually, because this is new for them. They're actually doing Bright Space with their parents and everything. So it was really, it was nice to have that connection with them so the parents get used to the whole process before the kids even hit kindergarten. So this was, this was brand new. I wasn't expecting it. They said, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do a report card, so it's good. Very happy to see that. So the next one you're going to see is the kindergarten through the fifth grade, and these are proficiency-based. So you see that Mike got all the core all together in one spot. They have a school values, the allied arts are all together. Then we put the comments at the end, and teachers put, a lot of them put subject matter that they worked on, and the kids all had the same, but they could put personal in also, just like we did with Mastery Connect, with an encouragement for parents to look for more comments in Bright Space on actual assignments. So this was K through five. And then the last one we have is six through eight, and their academic performance level was percentage-based. They also had some proficiency-based in their allied arts. And they had a content area also.
So in math, I see the four, say, but how come there's not a number?
So the four would be their effort grade, and the math was an A. This is proficiency, this is percentage-based.
Okay, so you give them an effort, and then you got.
An effort and, and a content area score.
Okay.
So the school values and the effort are on a one through four universally, are they not?
Yes.
Yeah, universally, everybody, it doesn't matter what grade you're in. It's a one through four effort in school values, then six through eight gets the A, B, C, D.
I've also decided to add effort in every content area because a lot of times students will put more effort in one area than another. So teachers give the, have the ability to score a student based on their effort in the current, you know, the content area that they attend.
Sure, because sometimes their effort is not reflected in the final grades. If they're trying really hard but still not getting, they're at least trying.
Right.
Exactly.
On the other hand, if they're really capable of doing better work and they're not trying, that shows up too.
Exactly, yeah.
The grade will reflect their effort, which is good.
And in past, school values, six through eight had perseverance in there. So in order to make that work across the board, we added an effort score to every content area.
So when the parents are logged in on the Bright Space, they can see individual grades on, built up to this, right?
Yeah, each assignment, yeah.
Which are those listed as ABC or are those listed with a number value, like 95?
So they, they have both. They have the percentage rate, they have the number.
Six, six, six through eight is A, B, C, D.
Right.
K through, pre-K through five is one.
But, but in Bright Space, there's a percentage that they can look at. So they can see a score at any given time. Like if they're at 89% and they're really pushing for that next.
So if they have an A, would a parent be able to go in and see if it was like a 94 or a 99 kind of A?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's got that deeper level in there, yeah.
And that's a great question. Glad you said deeper level. I'm just trying to stay away from the presentation here. A letter went out accompanying this too. And it basically said, this is, you know, your report card, but if you want more information, go in, go into your students portal and take a look. Because if you wanted to know how your son or daughter did in a math unit, there was a big math unit, and he or she got an 89, that's where you're going to find that.
Yeah, good.
It's not going to show on the report card. So they can get as granular as they want if they go into Bright Space, and that's what I'd recommend they do, or contact a teacher if they have any questions.
We're pushing promotion for more Bright Space interaction.
Yeah.
So every month, if you haven't accessed the portal in X amount of days, you'll get a notification saying, please check this out. And from my report, it shows you, when we started this, we had 10 parents accessing the portal. Now we're up to 65, and that keeps increasing.
Yeah, I saw that. That was great.
That's good.
Yeah, you'd have to. So parents will also find more personal comments on any given assignment in Bright Space also. So after looking at this, I wanted to see where kids were in reading and math, just using, John and I talked about using the report card and looking at kids who are at near mastery or mastery, or if they are at A or B up in six through eight. So we looked at reading and by grade level. I did not put K on here because K at this point has been spending so much time just getting in that routine of kindergarten that I didn't put them on for this one, but they'll be, they'll go into further data reviews when we get into the iReady piece next month. But this is first grade through eighth grade and where they are at either near mastery or mastery on report card, or As and Bs in the middle school on their report card. So we had, the, the really nice thing was that we had no failing students in any subject area, which was so nice to see.
That's great.
They're working really hard. And then John and I were talking too about how this looked in relation to the NWEA testing in the fall.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
And it tracks. It tracks when you look at, at the, especially like we were looking at third grade because I was a little bit concerned, but 55% of them on their NWEA in the fall were at low or low average. So they're an area where this kind of graph gives you a heads up. So third, fourth, and sixth, for the reading piece, this, this allows their teachers to go, oh, okay, so here's, here's where they're at. So I'm really excited to see next month because they're all doing the iReady diagnostic in reading for K5 and in math for K through seven. And the jumps in points that these kids are achieving has been pretty nice to see. So this was my favorite. I'm sorry, I have a bias.
The math lady.
This is their math.
Wow.
And on the report cards. So I was extremely happy to see this.
Can you say that part again? There, there were no failing grades on the report cards? That's, that's really good.
Yeah, so I, I'll, like I said, I'll be happy to share next month what's happening with iReady in the math and reading. And they are also in January taking the NWEA again for a winter score.
That's excellent. I also want to thank you, Patty. You did a nice job putting together a graphic representation of the report card. I thought it was pretty neat.
That's very good.
Also to remind the committee that when we get into the budget season, we usually don't, we don't do progress monitoring or celebrational learning to save the time to get through the meeting and get to our budget. So, you know, we may have something for iReady. We probably will in January, and then we'll probably take a break from Patty's progress monitoring for three or four months until we get a budget, and then we'll go back to these kinds of presentations.
I can put it in my stuff for you guys to look at, though.
Yeah, that would be good.
Sure.
Just attach it.
That's great information. Thank you, Patty. Thanks so much. Good to see that the report cards are up and running so well, and it's good to see how these progress charts are great.
I was happy to see, yeah.
All right, let's move on to committee reports. Do we have anything from the policy committee? We do. We have one, two, three, four, five.
There's like 60 pages.
Sixty pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were some very long ones.
So.
Oh, come on, smile.
Well, one I didn't hit print on because I knew it was the wrong one. I forgot which one. I was like, nah.
The strikeout one?
Are these all new ones?
No.
These are all updates.
Right, so, so the, this is basically all the accounting policies. So you see all the individual ones that are all part of the DIRI procedure policy. So to do the procedure policy, I had to do all the other ones, just to make sure everything was up to snuff. And most of it, the other big policy that changed was the one on fund balance. I had calculated it because the state had changed their state statutes. Okay, so it used to be 3% over three years and all that. Now it's, it's currently sitting at 9% only for a couple more years, and it's going to go back down to 5%. And so I did that policy to match the state and the statute that's there now. The other big change is because we, when this was done in 2017, we had a very lengthy budget articles, you know, all 18 or 21 or how many we ever had. But now we're down to the ballot-type summary. So that whole section was rewritten to, to make it so it matches what we're using. But it was also written in a way so that you could use either one because technically you can use either one. If they just, you know, if you guys decide you want to go back to, you know, the town floor forum, you still have that option as well. So a lot of it was just, okay, let's get her out the park. And there is a lot in there about accountability. Okay, again, follow accounting laws. So I will, I'm going to put my plug in here. Really going to start when we do the budget next year, when you guys do the budget next year, that, that you have at least two people in central office for accountability purposes, okay? Not only for all the different accounts and, you know, how things should be separated, but also, you know, if somebody gets sick, I mean, we don't want to be like a certain city that didn't pay their payroll. We don't want to be like that, okay? So I mean, and, and without having somebody, having two people that at least trained to do it, you could be in a world of hurt, and we don't want to be there. So there's my plug.
Okay, we don't want to be there either. So I think probably the best way to do this is to say that these are all fiscal accounting reports, policy updates, and I will just look for a motion.
I just want to ask a question.
Okay.
On the bottom here, it says prepared by Kimberly Oliver, June 12, 2018. Do you want to change the date till now?
It'll be, yes, there'll be another one that'll say revised, and then it'll be December 2022. So I'll do the dates after you guys over.
Oh, okay.
Just second, I'll do that with all the individual ones too. You know, to say reviewed again on 2020, 2012, 2023.
Oh, okay, all right.
I asked the same question.
Oh, you did?
So is everybody willing to waive the reading of all the DI's and DIA's?
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of 7.11 through 7.1.15.
Yeah, it would take some time.
And, and I will act, look for a motion to accept those policies as revised as of today.
I move that we accept these policies. Do we need to list them all out?
To what?
Do I need to read out the?
No, just the policy, yeah.
To accept these policies as revised.
A second to it.
Okay, CJ and Jenna, any other discussion? Other than thank you for bringing these all up to date.
No problem.
I know.
All those in favor? Do we have anything from the long range?
We did not.
We got some other, we got some other things up here.
Down here, EFC, EFC, I remember from last month,
with the procurement procedures and code of conduct, we had some corrections or something.
Those are second class.
They're all updated, so basically Mary's motion to accept 7.11 through 7.115 covers those policies as well.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm, I'm just, I know you don't have to print them out all over again, but I was just, we all put a comma after, on the last page after Wad and put Holly's name. Okay, all right.
He'll be fixed.
Fixed.
Okay. Long range planning didn't meet, okay. So let's go on to number eight, which is new business. And Mike's going to talk to us about Bright Space.
Yeah, my new Bright Space update is what was posted in my report that we, since we started Bright Space, we have increased our parent portal access up to 65 as of the end of November, and the number continues to grow. And as I mentioned earlier, we are pushing promotion for parent access by automatically sending them notifications every X amount of days if they haven't been accessing the portal to check it out, see how your child's doing.
I'd live on one thing that Mike just informed you. The, the pre-K through five teachers put out like a weekly update, similar to what I do with you and the staff, but it's more attuned to what their kid's doing in the classroom, of course. And they send that out as an email, as an attachment, and most of them are also putting them in Bright Space. And it's kind of double duty for them right now. We've always done it as an attachment with email, and I get a copy, and I usually comment on anything I see there that I really liked to the teacher, him or herself. That being said, if we can get our parents to go to just Bright Space, the teachers no longer have to send the email. But it's interesting because I talked with some teachers, and they're like, well, I really need to do both because if the parent's not on Bright Space, and I say, every kid needs to bring sneakers on Monday, and you're not going on Bright Space to see it, the teacher's feeling like, well, maybe they're not going to see it. So they're kind of doing twice the work. And I, and I feel for them. So I'd like to get as many parents to check Bright Space if they want the update on their student. And it might be, well, I really don't want the update on my student. But there's stuff you have to know too in that update. It's not really a, if it's interesting to you, you know, you may, as a mom or dad, you may need to know to bring something on Monday. So we're kind of working through that, and I know now that we've increased people that are using Bright Space. My hope is over, it's kind of hoping by now, but I guess that was kind of a dream. So maybe over the course of the year, we have more parents using that so that if I want to see what the teacher sent to a parent, I'll just go on the Bright Space. Somebody can show me how to do that, and that way it just goes there and it's not copied to Mr. Ross, and I'll look at it that way.
That was a good increase in one month. You know, I, I think that was a, a good jump, a good jump in one month.
And our initiatives too with Bright Space, we're trying to send, is it okay to say Ms. Goodwin?
Yeah, she's learning some profession, she's taking some professional development. I'm sure.
To help enhance teachers' understanding on how to build content, enriching content, and engaging content. So we're hoping to increase the, the quality content within Bright Space to help enhance the engagement of both parents and students. So maybe they'd be drawn to it more as well.
Right, and that's a, Bright Space has its own PD suite where you can take online courses and sign up and go, and Jen's doing that for us, and she'll be somebody who, like Mike, I think of as Mike's the techie, he's kind of in the computer. Jen could play a role with helping teachers, you know, look at all the bells and whistles and how to use those, as well as parents. That's, so we'll have kind of like a person at the front end to help people as well. And there is another initiative. Let's not get into the weeds of a contract with another school district, but we did find somebody who's done this for two years, who kind of like has a little side job, will work with Mike's. And my hope, and I'm not the technician, my hope is there's less checking the box for the teachers next time around. We did what we did this time because we'd never done it. And it might be like, you know, oh, now we've discovered the wheel. We don't have to carry everything anymore. And that's my hope. Now, do I know if that's going to happen? I'm not technical enough or savvy enough to know that, but there are different things that can happen between now and T2 that should, I hope, make it more efficient for the teachers. That's the plan. We'll see how it works out. I'm pretty sure it will.
And plan off Johnsworth, the wheel is in motion for that process to hopefully decrease the amount of technical flicking on the teachers' end so they can focus on their content to help pull more people into the portal.
Well, my thing is, we hired Jen Goodwin not just as a librarian. We hired her as a librarian and media specialist. So now the media specialist comes into play. I'm very happy.
Well, I think she uses a lot of the media stuff already.
Oh, yeah.
She does, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, yeah.
But I mean, that would be. Perfect use of her.
Perfect use, yeah.
Expertise.
Exactly, yeah.
Glad to hear it.
Anybody else got any questions or anything for Mike?
No, I think Mike has been working hard on this, dealing with the teachers, getting the input, and then changing things right on.
Superstar. Superstar.
I appreciate it.
In this process, for sure.
Patty too, I mean, we're both been in the forefronts, you know, frontline striving to make, this is a new system, it's very complex, and it's very involved. Not knowing how all the pieces go together and then figuring it out and trying to deliver it, sometimes you make a mistake, and so you have to pull it back and put it back together and reevaluate how you're going to deliver it.
I know. I just want the teachers to be able to teach and not worry so much about this.
And that's our ambition. That is our goal.
Michael, the amount of, how much time is the teacher taking input to data into, into the comments for the students, for each one of the students? You're talking about, you know, doing a double that and email. So what's the amount of time that they're using? And are they doing it during, before, or after class?
He answers yes. We're doing it after weekends and nights. I'm not kidding, Ray, it was. Yeah, no, I appreciate the spare to be questioned too. Number one, I do, last, last school board meeting, I made a plug for the teachers on the fact of how hard they were.
the fact of how hard they were working, whether this is going to be successful or not, and there's nothing worse to put in a plug and see people beat themselves up and then not have a report card. That's why I danced a little jig earlier, because we actually had a result of their hard work. Now, the question being, how much time? A lot. And if we compare down the check, we call it the checking of the box, you wouldn't have to be a teacher to understand that kind of thing, that there's a lot of manipulation of information that has to happen to get this report card out. We're hoping to make some of that automated, that's what I just commented on with some help from another school, to reduce that time, in the spirit of what Mary said, which is I want teachers to teach and not have to dabble around with Brightspace. I will caution that with any organizational change and a big implementation, there's a ton of front work. Was all of our front work done excellent from the people that led it? Absolutely not. Did we regroup and work with people to get us there? Absolutely, and that's what I was getting at. The comments section, I'm going to be careful here, because I am not going to say that not every one of them is created by the teacher, some of them are dropdown, and you can pick and choose. That keeps things efficient. I do believe people can also put in their own comments if they want, and we also make comments optional. So, if a teacher's wanting to put in comments, excuse me, he or she could, if not, there was no force of march. So, yeah, a ton of time going into it. I don't know exactly the amount of time day to day that Brightspace may take. I'd love it that I'm not seeing emails with attachments and everything goes from Brightspace, because I mentioned to myself, that's extra on the teachers. But I think I need parents to be 100% on board before we're going to be able to pump the brakes on that. That I can't control, you know, that's not anything the schools can actually manage. We can manage how much workflow goes towards the teachers, but we can't manage that piece. So, even if we had to do it the archaic way, which was last time, at least we've done it once, and we've all learned a couple of small things to save some time, I'm sure, but we're not going to relive T1 again. We're not going to do that. We'll go in a place now where we've learned a lot, and we'll get better at it. But your question, you know, was it nice weekends during the day? Yeah, it is, yeah.
Have you had any input back from the parents, as far as sending questions back, requesting more information?
And my, my letter that went to the parents basically said, consult your child's Brightspace page, or reach out to the teacher. And in all honesty, I've not asked the teachers themselves how many parents have reached out to you for questions, or to even say thanks for the report card. In my world, no information, no, no, no feedback's good in my world, given my position. Not maybe so true with teachers.
I would, I would like to hear some of the upper grade parents that wanted this change. I would like to hear from them that maybe.
And you've just asked.
It's been worthwhile for them, you know, it's kind of nice, they really wanted this change.
As a school board member, I can see exactly why you made that request.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd love to hear back from them.
I know of one person who's very thrilled.
Good.
That's all I'll say.
Good.
Very thrilled.
Not to mention names. And as far as the remarks go, I think teachers traditionally have made remarks at report card time anyway, on their report cards. Teachers have written things on their report cards before we even made this kind of change. So, that making, making comments on the report card isn't anything new, it's something that they've always done, so.
And hopefully it's a little more automated for things that are repetitious around effort, and hopefully that helps. And I tell you, the six to eight group is the only place I spent any time on feedback on this, and the older kids are like, they have to get their signed and sent back, that's why. The littler kids, you could plan on, it might not make, if it doesn't make it home in the backpack, it's because they lost it, it's not because they didn't give it to their mom or dad. When you turn 12 to 14, it easily finds a way of not making it to mom or dad. So, it gets signed and brought back, and they're like, a couple of them were a little nervous about whether they were going to get any weekend privileges or not, so it's pretty interesting to see that come around. I hadn't seen that yet here.
And the other thing, it is open dialogue between the parent and the child, because the parent's like, I want to talk to you about your report card, and they have to face the consequences.
It's not a bad idea. We used to have to do that years ago, we always had to sign the report card.
Always, always.
Full circle.
I think I signed my mother's name a couple.
Don't give anybody any ideas.
Santa, Santa heard that. Your idea about being good all the time, just one. Okay, anything else about Brightspace, or are we ready to move on? Let's go on then to, thanks, Mike. Let's go on to the LED lighting update.
Well, basically, when you came in tonight, you probably noticed the building's a little bit brighter, as you come in. The guys started last week, most of the hallways are done, the old music room is done, this room is done, some of the offices are done. The guys are doing a fantastic job. John gave them a schedule to work around as far as the movements of the building during the day, and right now they're working on all the areas that don't impact any of the daily grind and, you know, the movements within the building. So, right out the gate, my first initial thoughts are, is that I'm very pleased with the overall choice of the lighting. Still learning more about this as we go along. I wanted to show you guys one of the lights, just to show you that, first of all, this light, it's about half the size of that one, that's a two by four, this is a two by two, but they're much thinner, they're a lower profile, so getting the new ones up and in the ceilings is.
Easy.
Is a little bit easier to work. But what I want to show you is, these lights, they have these two little selector buttons on them.
Oh, the Kelvins?
Yep. And basically, you can adjust them, there's brightness and color.
3,000?
Yep.
How much?
So, there's three, three adjustments for the color.
Yep.
And then there are three adjustments for the brightness.
Yep.
As you recall, like when John and I presented this to the town, there were questions about the brightness and the color and the requirements and all of that, and I've been doing my research through the DOE to find out what those requirements are in certain learning spaces throughout the building, and they actually give a lot of that.
Sure.
A lot of those specifications in these two adjustments.
So, 3,500 would be a soft white, right?
Yeah, like one of them is a soft light, one is like a warm light, and one is considered like a natural light.
Right.
And then these are your brightness. Like these, these lights in here tonight, these are all set like right in the middle.
Uh huh.
The guys installing them, they said that when they go in and they do the school upgrades, like what we're doing, they set everything in the middle, and then they show, you know, they show me, and I'll work with the other guys, so that we know how to adjust them.
Yeah.
And the other good thing about this upgrade is that if we have these adjustments, and we utilize the adjustments that are contained on the fixtures, and we don't get exactly what we want, we can then look at the possibility of dimmer switches and a few other options that with the old technology that we're replacing, we didn't have those options.
So, these are dimmable?
Yes.
Dimmable on three ranges.
Yes.
Correct. Not dimmable like as turn that you might have in your house for recess lighting.
Right.
Yeah, but they are dimmable, so.
What did they do with all the old equipment?
All the old equipment, when you enter into an agreement with Efficiency Maine, all the old fixtures that are coming out of this building have to be recycled. They can't be resold, they can't be reinstalled in another facility. That's part of the deal, it's getting rid of the old technology.
So, they take it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, all of the old, all of the old fixtures, as they're taking them out, they're taking them all apart, recycling them, and there's a big box trailer out back, and they're separating everything, so that when they leave, everything's like a total package, all recycled and ready to go, so.
Nice, cool.
Just maybe a shout out that, I don't even think I've said to Andy, maybe partially, but a shout out to the people that are doing this work. These, these people are super professional, they're around four-year-olds to 14-year-olds all day, and you know what? They're right on top of it, they're out of their way when they need to be out of their way, they're doing their thing when they need to do their thing, and they're top-notch, they're doing a great job, you know? When you're on a work crew, and you work on a work site with nobody around, it's a little different, you're in a school with a bunch of kids. They're doing a nice job.
It's very good.
Doing his job.
I'm pleased with their attention to detail, and, you know, like John said, they're keeping everything neat and organized with kids in the building, they're very safety conscious, so it's, I'm pleased, and I'm more pleased that Christmas vacation is going to, is our target date for having the project done. So, once things get in motion, it's going really quick, it's moving at a good pace.
And we have till February 17th in case we run into an issue. So, we're way ahead of schedule if this continues.
That's great.
Would you say it's halfway done, or a quarter of the way done?
I would say comfortably, we are one-third done.
Yeah, good.
That's nice.
So, but I'll be working with the staff next week, the guys work Monday through Thursdays, and the staff has been great too, as far as letting us slip into areas, like if they have a prep period, or if they have, the kids go to the specials or whatever, the guys have been filtering in and just knocking out little areas a bit at a time. But they will, it will come to a point where it's either they work after hours, or they work when school's shut down, so.
Start date?
What's that?
Their start date?
They started last week, last Wednesday, and they will be complete during Christmas break.
By January 1, January 1 is a Monday, I think we're back.
Yeah.
I mean, January 2 is a Monday, so, yeah, first week of January, let's hope, right? But then even then, we're still five, almost six weeks ahead of it's done by then.
Yeah, so. I couldn't be happier with how it's going.
Should be.
And I think that the difference in the building is going to be.
This room is very nice.
And the other thing too, that I did some reading up on is, DOE's got some information on their website about planning for new school construction, and a lot of the stuff that we're doing with this LED upgrade falls right into the, all the requirements, the new construction is basically what we're doing with the lights. If we were building a brand-new school, this is what our lighting would come with. So, it's as new and as cutting-edge technology is offered, so I'm pleased with it.
This turned out to be a great opportunity for us as a department, to be able to get together this and to have the rebates, and, yeah.
Anxious to track the payback period too.
Yeah.
Electricity rates are climbing through the roof, but it's going to be a usage that we're going to be looking at to see how much energy that we're actually conserving.
Yeah. All right. Great, all right then. Let's move on to eight, number three, which is ALICE safety training, which John is going to tell us about.
I kind of struggle between a PowerPoint presentation or printed materials. I'm going to give you printed materials, but I'm going to front-load it with just a couple comments about where we're heading, and then I'll go over all this material with you. So, we're currently living in a situ, we're living in a world at Hafen Elementary School that if there was a threat to the school in any way, we would go into what's called a lockdown. I call, we, we safety drill, we call them safety drills every month for a lockdown. Now, there is something that we kind of minted the term, and you hear it around, like a soft lockdown, which we went into when Sanford went into lockdown, and that's very simply, no one comes or goes from the building unless if they're escorted, meaning a parent's coming to pick up the child, so I'm going to escort them, Andy or Jim, somebody who's available is an escort. No one goes to recess, but inside the building, everything kind of runs pretty smooth and pretty much the same. Nobody has to stay in their room, but you can't go outside, and you're not coming and going without an escort. So, we did that, and that, that works out pretty well. A lockdown is when you're in your room, the shades have dropped, the door is locked, you might not even be in your room, you were walking down the hall, we went into a lockdown, and some adults said, you're coming with me. And every room has a place where you, what's shelter in place, basically, and you're quiet, okay? And that's an area in the room away from a window or a door. And with the littlest kids, you know, that's why we call it safety drill, littlest kids, they've actually really taught the kids to almost play like hide and seek, because they're four, I mean, some of them are three when they start, and they turn four when they're with us before, you know, October 15th. So, they, it's all age-appropriate, and what I'm going to present to you tonight is not the training, but the idea of the training that we're doing next week, and this is age-appropriate as well, which is good. That was the number thing, number one thing I looked at. The other thing is, if you look at the patterns of violent acts that have happened in schools over the last couple of years, shelter in place is probably not a good idea. If somebody makes it into your building and they're going to create harm, they're going to create harm, and they're going to find a way, and hiding might be one way of doing it, but it's not the only way. So, ALICE training presents to the teacher, the staff, the kids, menu options as to what to do, provided you've been given a risky situation. One of the, one of the options might be get out, one of them might be secure and stay. It depends on what's going on. So, I'm going to cover some of the basis of this with you tonight, I'm inviting you, the school committee, to the workshop we're having, the first training on ALICE is happening Wednesday, the 14th, starts at 1:45, it'll be over no later than 3:45. I'm guessing it's going to run an hour and a half, but we're doing an extended ERD on Wednesday, the 14th, for two hours in the gym, and the trainer is Joe Jordan from the Sanford Middle School, he's the resource officer. He and I, I waited on Tuesday before Thanksgiving for everybody to be out of the building, which that's a good day, because people are heading off to the holidays, so he met with me here around 3:00. And we spent about two, two and a half hours walking the building, looking at things, discussing this program, and I'm very much sold out. Joe is very competent, really knows his stuff. I'll go over the pieces of this with you. This is the print that I did already share with the staff at the last staff meeting, so Mike, if you just give copies to everybody from Sharon over to the audience, I'll take care of the school committee. Here's five copies, I'm just going to ask you not to move ahead of me, if you would, and I'm not going to read it all to you, I mean, you can read it on your own, I'm going to give you the gist of what we got here coming up in the 14th. Okay, so, I'll look, ALICE, L, L, yeah, try it again, A-L-I-C-E. A is for alert, and I know the school committee has seen some of this in my weekly updates, but really, it's just to take seriously that if you're being alerted to something, that this is, this is, this could be the real deal. Even though the last few things that have happened were hoaxes, the people that were in the middle of it didn't know it was a hoax.
Exactly.
So, you've got to take it seriously and, and alert. Now, lockdown, I'm going to get a little more in-depth in this packet with you, but it's about, is evacuation even an option? See, we don't even, the hardest thing, I think, for the staff is, you have, you can make your own decision in some cases about getting out of the building or not, whereas before, it's like, no, you stay where you're supposed to stay until police or somebody lets you come out. So, that's going to be a mind, that's going to be, we're going to have to train on shifting our thinking on that one. When polling the staff and talking to them, they'll say, yeah, I kind of already got my own plan. Like, I'm not sitting around, dude, if something bad's happened, I'm taking my kids, and I'm getting out of town. And I appreciate that. What this will offer us is a coordinated effort to where are we going to rally and how are we going to do it? Now that you have permission to do it, let's train for doing it the right way. So, if evacuation isn't, you can lock down, there's also different ways you can lock down that isn't just hiding in the corner. You might want to start barricading the place, and you know, Patty and I were on a phone call today, and we were talking with somebody in Sanford who said, it really made a difference in Sanford when they did do some of the barricading techniques, the principal and the police couldn't even get in the room, and they weren't letting them in. And I'm like, that is a very good report card on this program. They did what they were supposed to. Inform is a piece that we're going to work on as we go, and it could be as, in real time, as much as possible. Now, there's two pieces to this. This is about informing the people in the building, then there's informing the external partners called parents and guardians, that's a whole separate piece. But there is technology that we could look at called alerts, it's with a Z, where in theory and in practice, I can really look at this, we could have everybody in the building, if they had their cell phones, and most people do, and you give them permission to have their cell phones on them, they're teachers, they're staff, they're not the kids, so they don't really have to follow the student cellphone policy. And there could be things that go out from me, or from whomever, as we decide what it's going to look like, that says, we need from the library to door 24 down in pre-K to get out of the building immediately and go to the rally point in real time, because everybody's Because everybody's kinda waiting to see what's next. And if we're busy up front, if there's something happening down at the fifth-grade wing and pre-K and Kelsey's classes, fine, why, why, why not get 'em out while they can? That's the thinking. So, we'll learn more about inform. Counter, we'll talk about in this packet as well, which is a, really a last resort. What are you gonna do if you're faced with somebody who could be a threat? And then evacuate, I've kinda talked about that a little bit. That's getting out of the building and going to a pre-designed rally point. One of the things we have that's really interesting and good for the school, so first of all, one of the things that's kinda difficult is where we're all, we know that. Response time for us, it's gonna happen, look at the response to Sanford High School, everyone showed up, which was great. And actually, SWAT was practicing in the area at that time, so they were together. That's why they got there so quick, they happened to be in Sanford, couldn't have worked out better. The reality too, though, is we're not as close to everybody. Cavalry's gonna come in, no question at all, but how long until the first one shows up is my question. Not long, but long enough that we have to, may have to fend for ourselves for a little while here. So, you know, part, part of that whole piece is, you know, how long until help comes and where, where are you gonna go? To evacuate here, the good side of it is, there are so many options with the six or seven acres that we have around here, that I would much rather be looking for a scared teacher and child over in the woods than somebody who's scared and maybe injured in the building, seriously, you know? So, we have, we're not in a place where we're near a city street or anything, where we could evacuate probably pretty, pretty safely somewhere. And we're working on that. So, let's take a look at what we have. If you turn the page, you'll see K-3, and I'm not gonna go over everyone, every one of these, but you'll see that the plans change as kids get a little older, some of this is similar, but, you know, when you're gonna, when you're discussing evacuate strategies with K-2s, K-3 students, you know, it's a, it's a little bit like a fire drill, right? That's what we're talking about, we're gonna listen to the elevator room, follow directions. K-3 students practice fire evacuation drills, you can also discuss that students can evacuate, you know, for an intruder too. And there's ways you do that, you know, just start with this bad guy. There's actually books that ALICE prints for learning, like with these little cartoon characters about what a threat would look like, and it's age-appropriate. It's not, it's supposed to scare them, it's supposed to get them to think, like in a fire, we, we, we train and we train and teach kids what to do in a fire, and that's, fire's a very scary situation. This is a very scary situation, so we should probably train them. That, that's the point. Counter, students must listen to a teacher and follow directions, counter techniques will not actively be taught K through 3. Doesn't make any sense, right? What, what are we gonna do there? Lockdown, K-3 students should be taught to listen to a teacher and instructions for lockdown. The teacher will need to barricade the door, we're probably not asking K-3ers to help move a desk, you know? You know, and again, look at K-3, stay away from windows, you're gonna know that about, that, that last piece is true about everybody, don't, don't put yourself in risk. If you flip over and look at 4 through 5.
Sorry, here, this, in our school, this is probably pre-K through 3rd?
Yeah, it'd be P, yeah, it'd be pre-K. This print job didn't pick up on pre-K, but yeah, that's, and we group as pre-K through 2 right now.
Yeah.
3 through 5. And our third-grade classroom is up with 4 and 5. So, I've already talked to Megan, the teacher, that, you know, a lot of this is all gonna be the same in your room, and even though you're not located next to a smaller group of kids, you're still not barricading even if the fifth grade is. Just 'cause you're located that, that doesn't mean our behaviors are all the same. Our behaviors are, are cast upon the age of the children whom we're serving, no matter where they are in the building. Um, you know, your lockdown strategy, excuse me, is for K-3, so if we take a look at 4 and 5, you know, evacuation pretty much looks like, looks like the same thing, it's a little more, um, robust and, you know, they, they, they need to know how to get to a rally point. We're not talking about rally points with five-year-olds. You can with an 11-year-old, and you can practice it. You know, it's over, you know, just beyond the softball field or something if it's not winter time, just, I'm making this up. You know, your counter, students must listen to the teacher, counter techniques are not taught or swarm. I'm not gonna really get into swarm, that's a whole nother thing, it's really more like high school, okay? But there's not a lot of counter techniques that we're looking at at 4th through 5th, although I'll work with Joe because I think some of our 5th grade, it might, it could be, at the end of 5th grade, they're more like 6th graders than they are 5th graders, and they're bigger, I mean, some of them are 12. You get into lockdown, again, it's, um, this age, students can bring teachers' chairs, desks, and other types of furniture. It's not inappropriate to ask an 11- or 12-year-old, "Hey, you know, Judy, can you row over there and quickly get me this," or whatever, and practice with them so they all have a role to play and get away from the door. We're not doing that with the youngers, we're doing that with the middle. And then, of course, you'll see a little, a few more changes with 6 through 8. Evacuate, um, they, you know, walk your class right through it, um, figure out where your rally point is. With lockdown, during a lockdown, 6 through 8 students can be taught to assist the teacher barricading the door. You know, and then take a look at 6 through 8, after they barricade the door, they should spread out through a room, through the room, away from the doors and windows. Now, look, this is counter, this is what they mean by the C in ALICE, counter. Students can stand with a fork or other object they can use to distract an intruder when they get entry into the classroom. 6 through 8 grades are not taught to swarm. So, now we just ratcheted it up a bit. Somebody comes through the door and I'm looking quickly for things, of course, if this was my classroom, I'd know what I had, right? There's a lot of things you can do, the last thing you do is just stand there passive. Being in different places throws somebody off, 'cause now I'm not looking at a pile of kids huddled in a corner, I'm looking at, you know, 15 kids, 20 kids everywhere. And if they're even screaming and yelling, that's enough, right? And we're gonna get, in a training, we're gonna get into the cycle that the brain, how the brain can focus, and then if you do something, how it takes like a tenth of a second to refocus. You can buy some time with this as part of it. And laptops and other things, if that's what you've got to chuck at 'em, chuck at 'em. So, at that level, when it could really get intense, our older kids are expected or could, if they chose to, use some of these techniques. It stops there, we don't get into tackling and holding or trying to stop a bad person. In high school with this program, I looked at it, there are some techniques that you can teach, and I was in the secondary system for years, and there are some dudes that I had to deal with where I'm like, "I hope this kid doesn't go off on me, 'cause he's twice the size of me." And I gotta talk him down and get him home safely, 'cause he is not having a good day, and I'm sweating inside, but he doesn't know it, 'cause he's 260 pounds and he's a linebacker and he's 19. Okay, those are the tools you have at a high school. I got pre-K through 8, we don't have those tools. So, that's about as far as it's gonna go with us here at this school, and Joe's gonna talk to us about what this means, and we're gonna start our training. And then, there's a PD day in March, that's our day, and I'm gonna look to bring the, so bringing the, I'm bringing all staff but the two night custodians in on this on Wednesday that you're invited to. Everybody needs to be on the same page. And then, in that March meeting, that's a day staff, the support staff, don't usually come, 'cause they've already got their day at the front end of the year. I'll work, uh, you know, with the finance director to figure out what that looks like and bring these people in too, 'cause we need everybody on the same page. And then, there may be some times where I might come to you, depending on what it is, to look for some time for teachers to, to learn this, and maybe in the summer, maybe some other things, so that it's, it becomes as common as locking that door, shutting off the lights, and moving your kids to a quiet spot. That's what we do now, and we drill once a month on that. And it needs to be just as common as that a year from now, if not sooner.
Well, let me just make a suggestion, I have a niece who's a full-time sub down in New York, and she's in kindergarten teaching, you know? And without warning, the school went into lockdown. It was, she didn't know, it wasn't for real, it was a, a drill.
Drill.
But she really wasn't taught, 'cause she just started, and, um, so, of course, she knew, you had to lock, you have to get the kids, whatever you had to do, right? So, she's thinking this through, but her door didn't lock, you know, something else didn't work. But I just wanna make sure all our doors do lock.
They do.
After that, I was like, "I have to check."
They do, and you know, our, our process here is we go from, and I, I didn't bother doing this month, 'cause we're kinda changing it up, but we drill once a month on our current situation, and the doors need to be locked, and they always are. And we always graduate from announced to unannounced, so. And when you have unannounced, that's when you see more things that get overlooked, because they don't know it's common. And in an event that's really gonna happen, you usually don't know it's common.
No.
So, yeah, the doors do lock. But I'm gonna also put in a pitch for, now that I'm able to connect in a deeper way with law enforcement, looking at, like, this is an example of connecting deeper with law enforcement, if you get where I'm going with this. And, and that, um, that particular piece is to get any kind of grant money or partner with your county or somebody to doors. We looked at doors, there was $50,000 for a couple of doors that are new doors for some of our old wooden doors.
That would just shut or something, is that what you're talking about?
Well, we didn't even get as far as what exactly these doors will or won't do for us, but just to replace, helping. A couple of, was a lot of money, I was surprised.
Commercial steel doors to replace, uh, the old wooden doors on the 57 wing, and then we had a couple of entry doors that just need to be updated, and I think there were a total of seven units, and it was over $50,000.
We just priced it, just so Andy and I have an idea, 'cause we've got some of the wooden doors in the old end that have glass and wood. Probably in 57, that probably is what you needed to be safe. We're in another world. And the building's beautiful, and we've always invested in the building, but for safety upgrades, you're looking at, you know, even the ballistic, um, plastic you can put on the windows is gonna be the, one of the first things we can do, 'cause it's one of the cheapest things you can do with all the glass. Is it impenetrable? No. But the easy, the best way to break a window is not from the middle, it's from the corner. A lot of people don't even know that, but when it does break, a regular pane of glass goes everywhere.
Told everybody.
No, it's not a secret, but I'm just saying, all right, it's not true, I laughed.
Google it, Google it.
Break a window.
I gotta remember that.
You can get in a glassed-in window if you want, but if you put on the ballistics piece, it becomes more like a windshield of your car. It caves in together and it's still hard to get through it, and it's broken, but it's not all in a million pieces and I can walk through. It's a quick fix, but it's not a long-term solution. So, you know, we're thinking like that and looking like that.
I'm pretty sure after Sandy Hook, that's why we have all these shades, 'cause we were like, we have to be able to.
It wasn't here, yeah, yeah.
Shut that. And so, I hope all the shades are in working order and.
Yeah.
And they cut the bushes back all the way from the building.
Yeah, and we can, I can see line of sight is huge, you know, elevation is big, there's a lot of things. We, you know, soft lockdown, that's another one. You know, I, I was one of the few people who would go outside, so I went around and I walked the perimeter of the building for safety, and then I could see from the outside how many of our buildings from the road you, the shades weren't down. Quietly just asked Amanda to text Andy or something, I don't even know how it got to Andy, and said, "Go around and quietly, 'cause he's a maintenance guy, he's in and out of classrooms all the time, kids aren't gonna know."
Yeah.
He went around to the few rooms that window shades weren't down, and he took care of it. And I was outside, and I'm like, "10-4, we're good, all the window shades are now down." You know, so kids didn't even notice.
Yeah.
So, that's how you kinda, you work at a place where you try not to scare the kids, you gotta kinda keep your calm, with the idea that I'm keeping my calm, but I'm keeping both eyes open at the same time. So, yeah, there's a lot to do, and I can't give you a price tag of totally upgrading our building. We're gonna, we're gonna have to give it a good long look and, and figure out how we can, how we can make this place as safe physically as possible.
I know, but we have doors that close at the middle school wing and down here that just automatically close.
Fire drill, yeah, fire.
So, can that automatically close with a touch of a button?
It can with the, it, it can, but I'll tell you what one of your, one of the issues with that is, is it develops a barrier for law enforcement and line of sight to help if there's something in the building. I've created another barrier for somebody who might help.
So, if someone, we have, um, fire thing that you could pull, right? That closes the doors too, so someone could pull that, yeah, all right.
Um, so, Mary says her niece is a sub. Do we have plans to bring in the, like, our, our long-term subs and the most commonly-used, like, day subs, I'll say?
Yes, and I think what we're gonna do is we're starting with all paid staff that's on the roster to start with, and then our sub pool is so thin, I could probably include those people that are currently still with us, like, are, there's three that we count on big time. But as we get new subs, and we are getting some, 'cause you did a call for help and some applications come in, our onboarding of a sub's gonna have to look very different.
Yeah.
So, if we hire a sub in April and everybody's been trained, part of it is, there's gonna have to be a, a write-up or something that, coming out of HR that they've taken, not taken the task, but they can pretty much know, they can, you can somehow through HR know whether they know what they're supposed to be doing or not, before we can employ them.
Yeah.
And they have to know where the lock is on the door, and maybe we have universal keys that say "sub" right on that we give them and then get them back at the end of the day. There's a ton of training to do with people that aren't here much.
Yeah.
It's hard. Yeah? Yeah, good question.
I'm good friends with one of the teachers at Sanford High School, and she was describing the experience from her classroom, and, and they barricaded the door, and they've been told, "Do not open the door for anyone. Do not open the door for anyone." So, she said, "They're all, they've got the door barricaded," and they said, "Sanford PD, open the door and let us in." Nope. Nope, she said, "You know, you don't know for sure if it's Sanford PD or not."
Bad person would say, "Police, open up."
We just stayed where we were, and she said, "They had, they had a master key, and so they tried to open the door, and then they went and unbarricaded the, the area." But, um, and they, they were on the second floor, kinda looking down and could see all the activity that was going down, and the, you know, all the police activity and that was going on down in the, in the schoolyard. And so, it was, it was a very traumatic experience for all those teachers, so, yeah.
And we really haven't had a meeting since then, have we?
No, we haven't.
I just thought of that, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, I will say, and I said it earlier, for the people that were in that building, that was real for them for like an hour and a half, very much, sticks with you, yeah.
And what time was that on the 14th?
1:45. 1:45 here, we'll get going in the gym, because it's, it'll be a good-sized group. And the book, the book fair is here, so, well, we, this wouldn't be big enough anyway, really, for that kind of training.
Oh, the 14th.
1:45 to 3:45, we'll be.
That's next Wednesday, yeah, next Wednesday. Wow.
Okay.
Okay.
Wait. Knowing you're not familiar with the room, but I mean, you're just looking for a projectile, there are three projectiles.
Yeah, you've already found them, yeah?
He's got plenty.
Yeah, even that aspect, on your counter, um, understanding the age group that you're talking about, um, would be possible on, on a teacher's level, taser, pepper spray?
Oh, God.
Yeah, type of situation?
Probably not. Good, good question, at a teacher level, probably not, because then you have what's called non-lethal force, okay? It's not deadly force. Taser can be, if somebody has a heart problem, but to be trained and use non-lethal techniques of any kind moves you closer to a law enforcement role than a teaching role. Yeah.
You're really.
I love the idea, but I think we, I, I do, I really.
I just know that I've seen some magazines, they sell these, like, $50,000 bolt.
Oh, yeah.
Type of situation that anybody can purchase.
Yeah.
So, that was just a question. On another aspect, I used to work for a lumber company, and I'm looking at your doors are like 4Os for a construction grade, so I agree with your pricing. If you're looking at pricing, also, you said you walked around the building and saw that there were shades that were not down.
Right.
I mean, with the technology they have today, boom, you hit one button, all the shades can go down.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's something you might wanna look into a price like all of those.
We're gonna thank you, we're doing a lot of things.
No, I know, and I'm saying, the majority of people.
For the future.
Inaction with students here, and you're looking at doing this at a staff level, they might be in agreement to some of that stuff.
Okay.
All right. Any, anything else on ALICE?
All done with ALICE, Al.
Come to the training if you can, school committee. I, I get it, I, we're all busy, but we'll give you an insight to where we're headed and then, you know, it might be the only one you need to come to, 'cause it's gonna be the first one, which is a good overview, yeah.
Okay, then let's move on to 8-4, and I'm glad we're moving in this direction. Should make our parents happy too, I think, and our staff. It should be, add an additional comfort level for our parents and our staff. So we'll move on to number 8-4, and I'll turn that back to you too, John.
Okay. So, here we are in December, and remember Kim Oliver?
Never heard of her.
Kim's been, Kim's been trying to, I guess quietly retire, but perhaps professionally retire, a couple times here. And I've talked her out of it a couple times, and this last time, I'm like, I get it, I can't talk you out of it again. So, we looked and we looked, and we've had some false starts, and we've looked for a replacement, and it was, it was very difficult to find somebody who has the skills, the macro skills to run a school department, which is no different than running a school department with 4,000 students. You still have to file the same state reports, the numbers are just different. You need to know the macro view. But a lot of those systems have a director that has...
An HR.
Have, yeah, has like six or seven people doing stuff for them underneath them to make sure the micro things get done. Here, you're going to do the macro and the micro. The person who's creating the budget and looking at all the state pieces is also the same person that has to basically prepare payroll every two weeks so people get paid. That's not, that's unique. It's unique because we're small. So, we advertised, and Paula Lantang came along and kind of responded to an ad, and Kim's been a great gatekeeper of who she thought would be a good fit, who wouldn't here, because it's not often you get to kind of help name who your replacement would be, so to speak. So, we hired Paula Ron as a person to come in and help Kim because there's a position there that wasn't filled as the, you know, kind of the bookkeeper assistant central office. And we hired Paula for that position, and she came along and learned quickly and did outstanding, because her background is in finance, and I'll let her tell you a little more about herself, so I'm going to take her thunder from her on that one. Paula's been working with us off and on for, I'm going to guess, for about a month, maybe five weeks, but full-time, just for the last week and a half. Is that correct, from what I know? Yeah, okay. Caught up to speed. So, here's the thinking tonight. I'm going to nominate Paula Lantang as the next finance director for the Acton School Department in this manner tonight, because we have a school committee meeting. If you give me the authority to hire her, because you can hire, not me, at these level positions, what we would do is we would keep Kim and Paula right where they are, but January 1 swaps seats, basically. Paula would pick up right where Kim is in her contract to fulfill through June 30, and Kim will be available to us with what Paula's position would have been, but not coming in and sitting in the seat across from her, that doesn't make any sense. But to be available and working with us on consult when we need her, which will be a lot to start with, but the idea is after we do everything once, because schools are so cyclical, you do the same thing at the same time of year, but you only do it once. Some of the school year's already gone by, so Paula wasn't with us when we opened school, so we don't know what that looks like, but is attentive moving forward. So that's the plan, and that's kind of what we came up with. And I think Paula, if you would, would you mind introducing yourself to the committee as my nominee for the next position of finance director, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's Paula Lantang. I've told them about where I've been.
All right, just a little bit about your experience and what you've seen so far at Acton, how's that?
Yeah. I come with 30, 40 years of experience in the nonprofit world. So I've been, a lot of it's satisfactory, seeing. I've picked up, I've done payroll and accounts payable, and those have gone really smooth, and learning all the different reports and all that, which is pretty much similar to what I've been doing, where I came from. So I'm very excited for the change. I've been looking for something a little different, but not too different. I live in Shapley, so I don't live far, and it's very convenient, and I love being in the school. It's been where I came from before, we really didn't see people and clients, I was always[1591.58]